Yeah, that's it. It's nine tenths of a mile within the way to Route forty-five. My would have my work. And board with the rest. We're gonna move in with prayer. To God, we do thank you for this day, dear Lord. We thank you for the many blessings that you store upon us. Dear God, we know we deserve nothing but we praise you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. Dear God, we do ask you to give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and ability, dear God, to make the decisions that will help the people in this county. And I pray for our city, our state, our county, and our nation, dear God. I pray, dear Lord, that we would all take in turn and pray to you, dear God, that it be you for our nation. We ask all this in Jesus' sweet name. Amen. Brother Brad, if you leave some?
I'll leave.
Let me leave it to the flag.
Flag, please, is the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome all y'all. We thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. And we're gonna get started on our business. We need to approve the minutes on July eighteenth to twenty-ninth of July in August to fill. If there's any other packets, I have a motion to a second. Motion by Jerry. Second by Steve. All in favor. Approve the monthly findings.
I'll make a motion for number six.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor. Thank you. We have Jennifer Miller visiting with us tonight, our new county agent. Ms. Jennifer, we step up, introduce yourself. Thank you, Ms. Sheila, for coming. You should feel honored because I've never house anything with him.
We are very excited to have Jennifer joining. She came on July first as our county agent. She's taken Tim's position as Assembly Leader, as a district director there. And so Jennifer started with July first. She comes to us with ten years' experience in Wheeler and Montgomery counties. She has an Agribusiness Environmental Systems degree from the University of Georgia. And we are just very excited to have her, and y'all may just call her.
I'm glad to be here, and it's good to see all of you, and anytime and anything, just let me know. The transition's been pretty smooth, and I've been glad to make the move across the river.
I used her before she ever got here.
That's right.
Are you all ready to move into our area?
Well, actually, I live right across the river in James County, right near Young and Bitlins. It's where I grew up, our family farm, and that's where we live now. But that's not our permanent location, so keep an eye on it.
Good. Glad to hear that. Thank you. Johnny Miles, question, the claim to concrete around the courthouse. Johnny, can you come up front, please?
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Johnny Miles.
Good.
And I'm with Johnny Miles Crime Service. I do have everything I need. Been in the county business for a long time, and I just wanted to come down and see what it would take for me to, you know, this is our courthouse. And I'm quite sure that all y'all look around, you know, we see, we see where they did that. Not only the courthouse, the jail center, and, excuse my expression, but I call it the food stamp place. Right next to the, yeah, over there at the beef rack. I do do that kind of work, and it takes a pressure washer to do that. But you gotta hook the pressure washer to the machine that I have. I also have a, have a concrete cleaning. I have a concrete cleaning machine. And I just wanna know, you know, what it takes to get on, you know, to do some of the city work or whatever, or how may I go about it? I do have federal tax I do know, and I, I make sure, like I said, I've been doing cleaning for a long time. I would love to, it's not a problem. I like the cleanup of this courthouse. Just our first place to start.
And do you have a voter license? You licensed?
Well, yes, I'm licensed. I'm licensed to hit the earth. I'm insured to office trial insurance agents. I got business card. I've been around, I've been around here. Here's my home. Been around here a long time. It's two or three fellow citizens down here.
One thing, Johnny, that we had, you had to give us an estimate.
Right.
To the jury, and we don't have that money anywhere just laying hanging. And I want to tell the other commissioners that you had done a small part for Preston over across the street.
Right.
And that they wanted to look at it, that between now and we begin again, that they could go over and look at it. And we would have to come up and be able to find the money and see where we could get it from, you know, before we could do it. And then we would break it to a bug, to a bug, you know, to have it done. But I want them to, I've been over to look at it and seeing it. Done a real good job. But we got some many things here. And when you walk in the door, and I know that's outside, and that would help a lot, but that tile that's down that hallway gets on my nerves more than the concrete where we walked in at. And, but I do appreciate it, and I wanted them to meet you. And that's why I, you know, asked you to come to the meeting in here. And that, and then let them take it and go over and look where it did clean it over there. And how good a job. It's not just a regular pressure washer job, like most people, where you see the streaks and everything else. Y'all have your machine that's kinda like a flow buffer, don't you think?
Yeah, it's like a flow buffer. It's called a big guy. It's called a concrete, but you look it up. I mean, you know, it'll do the job.
It does a super job. I mean, I say, I can tell you that, anybody in the elders, I mean, anybody else, when I did my car porch at home or whatever, you got streaks when you do it with a pressure washer, and you didn't have them over there.
Well, you know, like I said, you know, it's not a big deal because I'm gonna try to work anywhere I go. But this is our courthouse. You know, we wanted it to look nice.
I agree.
If I could be of some help, I'll be in the business. I thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate you for coming. Y'all do get time, drop by and visit, and place down a smaller place for Preston, and it looks real good. Then two thousand seventeen tax commissioner's budget to include the five pays and foreclosures and expenses that we have up in the court. Do you want to mention that?
Yeah, we were in a meeting and with Julie, and they changed the way they handled this in the past. They was paying at the end, and now they want the money upfront. So the best thing, easiest way for us to make it work is just to transfer the money into Susie's budget.
They want the money, the court.
Yeah, I mean, we're really, what we're doing is just swapping money.
But they're, make sure I understand it right. Their books has got the tally, and it's got to come in there and then turn around and be ripped back out for it to tally exactly.
Right. It's something to do with balancing according to what the state.
The state requirement is this, where they see where it's paid, even though we're gonna get it back. I mean, we're taking and robbing. I'll take it out of one pocketbook, then another one, but they said we had to do it. So we would have to amend the two thousand and seventeen budget that we had passed to put this money in there, but then it'd come back, back to us.
Back to the jail funds.
The general funds when, you know, we foreclose or we have us tax sale or whatever. Ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion.
I'll say it.
Got a second. All in favor. Thank you. Approve or deny resolution to open a new jail account? Gary, you want?
This is, you know, where we talked about with the sheriff, with the money to the clerk, the ten percent fines. It needs to be transferred at the end of the year into a new bank account. We need a resolution to open that bank account.
While we wait to the end of the year, follow what we're going to do with the rest.
This one makes for a motion to the city.
This is what the clerk pointed, collects up there.
They collect point at ten percent.
Yeah.
Ten percent over whatever your fine is.
Yeah, we go for the city, do the same thing. So what we would need, that that would start in July, our new fiscal year just started, right?
Yeah, well, what happens transfers what was in there through the end of this past year.
End of this past, but then, so we go ahead and dub it now. And it would, the same account that where that money comes in, we've got the city money and the county money, and so it's the same account, correct?
Yes, sir.
We would have to, I mean, that's what, so ten percent above whatever the fine is that would.
There's no point in doing it on a monthly basis because that's just generating extra paperwork when the money's gonna be sitting right there, and we just wait to the end of the year, unless the sheriff needed it for something. In other words, we just let it collect and then transfer.
Get back and look at that running to the city, because the city's supposed to build the county, I'm sneaking back up. The county's supposed to build the city every month, and they're supposed to pay by the certain day every month. That money can't go into our general fund. It has to go into a jail account.
Right. That's just a separate issue to me than what we're talking about there.
We're talking about the same issue with the jail account.
Yeah, I, I think that even though whatever Julie was collecting and sending down, we put the fine money in the general fund, but I think that we need to put the ten percent over in a jail fund on a regular basis. We have each month, there'd be two deposits, one from the city and one for the county. And that'd be in there, and we won't be looking at, I won't be looking at something that may be five thousand dollars that I think is in the general fund, be going to the jail at the end of the year.
I agree, maybe two thousand.
Well, two thousand, whatever.
I don't say it. You're thinking you got a lot.
Yeah, 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 I think it, yeah. And all it is is transfer just one more time. So if someone wants to make a motion and do it that way, or do?
I'll make the motion that we open an account, and it's for you for city and county, and the funds will be deposited in it on a monthly basis.
I'll say. Got a motion by Brad, and second by Jerry. All in favor? Discuss or approve the L.B. project for two thousand and seventeen. Passed out, each one of you got that paper in mind. Different roads. Robert and I wrote, I wrote most of the roads last week. And then today I wrote for Robert. We wrote every, every one of them. And I like three, and then we wrote all of them again, plus the three that I had wrote. If you look there, and I'll call out what area that in. The Kitchen Landing Road, there's one spot that's about two hundred and fifty foot long. Both sides of the road just tore up. There's one spot that's in the center of the road, about a hundred and fifty foot long. That's in the Hazerhurst district. It's the one that should be done first before anybody's. It is the worst. I mean, it is awful. And so if we done, if we started paving that road at the end of the city, the living sign, where the R.E.A. and the Georgia Power is, that's probably about a three mile road going by. Mr. Olin Woodens and all down by Galverson, all the way down to the end. We would spend a lot of money paving roads. The stripes is pretty good on it, and the road's in good shape, except these two spots. I would hope that, once we go through these, and let me give y'all what I've seen, and y'all welcome to ride back and come and tell me that I didn't see what I should have seen. But I think that you'll find it pretty close. There's not the two roads on here that I think that we should pave all the way. Now, it's according to what is going to cost. It's a lot more to have it come in as somebody paved three hundred foot and then pick up and drive two miles and do another, say, a hundred and fifty foot. But yet, I think that we can get more roads for our money and get more roads up to date and to bad hole spits.
Get them safe.
And get them safer for people to drive, and that's just my opinion. That's yours, too?
Mine, too.
Steve, how about you?
I've been saying, I don't want, I mean, we got spots, spots and roses. We've had wrecks on. It needs to be repaired. And we can't afford to favor it on them.
We know it's gonna cost more. What we would need to do, if we come up and decide to do this, is to get in touch with Hostetter, and Hostetter get us in touch with the guy that worked through them in Baxley, Lovey. And then he would come, and Robert can ride with him and show him these roads. I ask you, once it's in your area, I'll fix and rig them all, all can tell you what I saw, and for y'all to mark it, and get with Robert and make sure that nothing's changed. And then we get him here, and maybe we can go ahead and pick up some more roads and, you know, get more fixed. But on the Preston Long Road that's in the Whitehead district, that road is where the fertilizer truck fell in on the search pipe where the beavers had tumbled. And that road, I'm guessing now, I don't think it's been paved over about six years, seven years, anything like that. I didn't think it would, but I'd rather be over than under. And there's two spots. Neither one of them drove a hundred fifty foot. One of them tore up real bad. About as bad as this one on the town's luck. Another spot is not bad. But when you're there, you wanna run them down. Really, one side of the road, all this, this tore up, but it's best to go ahead and let them pave both sides of the road the same length, and then you got them coming on and going all in the same spot. Berkey Ferry is in the O'Booky district. They two real bad spots.
They real deep?
They real deep, and they real bad. Had a complaint.
Were they, you know, that long?
They, no, about a hundred, one of them a hundred and fifty foot, one of them's two hundred and ten. And so that's there. Our Elizabeth Church Road, there's only two bad spots that's really bad. That's on the curve up toward the.
It shouldn't be on this list.
Well, and it shouldn't, well, it shouldn't be on the list, and the T money, the T, T money that comes from the state. Elizabeth Church Road, Satilla Church Road, and Philadelphian Methodist Church Road is on it. And then Steve had even said the Philadelphian Baptist Church. We need to ride it and look at it because it's real bad. So, but maybe there's enough money out that we don't do all these roads to even do it on this one. But we can't add it to the T. And the T money, there's not gonna be enough money in the T to do all three of those that's on there already at the end because it's gonna be short. Anywhere from six to nine percent if the tax, sales tax don't come in better. That's the Elizabeth Church Road, and you can draw through it because we can't do it, and it being on the T. Post Road, there's two spots on Post Road. One's down where Pipeline comes into it. Let's, with the Post Road, there's two real bad spots, about two hundred foot long each in motion. And then there's one other place. And when I first seen Post Road on, Post Road's probably a twelve mile road.
It's close.
It's ten or twelve, somewhere about, and, but it's only these two spots. And I'd like to say I asked y'all to ride it, and that's in the Blackford district. Pipeline Road, Bacon County has paved theirs, which is about nine miles from the Dickle Highway all the way to Join us. I was nine tenths of a mile from where the county line starts to where it stops. And then the road there where it used to have the dumpsters, it's probably a hundred and fifty foot wide for those trucks to turn in. And I'd say it's probably, you could just say it's a one mile road for the amount of asphalt that it's going to take. That road needs to be paved all the way. If y'all can get out and look at it. The Leon Wilds Road, there's only three bad spots. Only one spot's done been fixed where the water had came over. And there's three bad spots on there, and they ain't, they ain't all together, and they were three hundred and fifty foot. Then the other one says Mount Zion Church Road. But, well, it's, it's not Mount Zion. It, people call it that, but it's Wheel Waters Road. It's from where our dump site is back to the back of the highway where the old truck stop used to be. And it's got some bad spots, but they're not on the shoulder of the road. They in the center of the road where it looked like where it's put together. And it doesn't need to be repaved all over. And then, then I'm sorry, did, W.E. Corson Road. It doesn't have any shoulders on the road. If y'all ride, help S.M. Myers and Automa Hall area. And it doesn't have any shoulders. They probably twelve inches about missing on these sides of the road. I put it on to have stripes one time. Miss you, if you remember, the state said it wasn't, wrote there to strike. We'd be striking the dirt. It's about a mile long, maybe a mile and a quarter. It would go from Automa Hall Highway, and it's really not too bad. Probably wouldn't have to start there. It probably could start on down around Lois Hewlett's or Mike Hewlett's house and go the rest of the way. Maybe three quarters of a mile that needed to be paved and made the road striped. And the last one, Claxton Road, we have paved it four years ago, three of all, four, I think. And it's good from turning off the Lumber City Highway to the railroad track. When you cross the railroad track, for about a hundred and fifty yards, maybe two hundred yards, if we started at the railroad track and went all the way to the two bad spot, it'd probably be quarter of a mile, and it would take care of that whole road. The other end of it, we ain't going around by Devon Williams and down by Harley Claxton, it's good. It's good. It's, with the railroad track to Ward Devon Williams, just there, to the, well, it's not always. It's probably a couple of bad spots, and right there it's real bad. So two things I'd ask y'all. First is just the way that y'all want to approach it. Second, all this, give Gary and I the authority to call Hostetter and let them come and see what the difference would be of where we want to, not patch the road, but, you know, put a hundred and fifty foot on both sides and everything, and see how that would run, and can we do it? And what it would run, and how much more. We know how the road, we just got done the three roads, about what it costs per mile when you run, but we don't know what. Another thing, when we were going out to L.L. Hoacher up today, they went last week, maybe a week before last, and sprayed the green, where the shoulder they cut about eighteen inches. They sprayed it with the green, what you call that stuff? They sprayed it out of the hose and supposed to add it together. Well, this all washed off, and they done it about two weeks ago. And I got out, and I can't find no grass coming up anywhere. So we need to give back the people that moved it out of, not moved in, you about, that's probably it. The people that did. Yeah, both of them. They, they were contracted by the company that paid the road for it. They don't want it coming down, and it's in the trucks. And we need to get back in touch with the people that done the road, let them come and look at it, and then see if we need to respray it, be it, they got a real heavy rain. I think the day or the day after that it was sprayed. How did your view of that? They sprayed, did you?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm thinking it'll be the case.
If he's ordered.
No, we finally got it right.
I think people told me in that area.
All this complaint I had is they on the round hand side there, they, they want big rocks.
Big rock, clay.
Rock.
Rock, okay, rock.
It ain't clay. I did have some complaints, a ton of people had. But he was retired. I told him he retired, he had time.
Well, I think that's what we're gonna do. So I'd like to make a motion that you and Gary would get to Hostetter and have them come and look on these hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty, to give us a price on what that's gonna be versus what we know we can call it.
See how far we could go.
See how far we could go before we go any further. Everything looked right to me, and it looked like it was pretty much in the right order of what we got right there. So I would like to know that before we.
I have a motion by Brad.
I'll say it.
I'll say. All in favor. Thank you. Could it come in?
You got anybody?
I'd like to say so. On the, you was talking about the roads. Hey, you, you took a peek at, Barney Road?
Yes, sir.
On that curb there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just.
But if you will talk with the people in the area that you coming in in January, that some of the houses, I can stand on the porch and spit to the road. And a lot of the problems there are roots that's growing in the trees.
Okay, you might be, you were talking about.
But that's two.
You talking with the foster?
Well, they with it foster, where James Carter, Amanda Thomas.
Right.
And Barney Road.
Barney Road, right.
Barney Road, too. And I'll ride with you any day, this week or whenever you want to.
I didn't know it's a bad spot on that curb. It's really, they, they broke asphalt at all. It's just ravelled.
Yes, sir.
On that curb, about, I don't know, eighty feet.
They, they somewhere between seventy-five and eighty foot. There's nothing but rock.
Yeah, just rock.
And if you hit it right, it's slacking.
Yeah, you probably go to the creek.
And, yes, but.
I understand. I didn't know if you had tried to include that, but.
We, we had, we had took, matter of fact, we, Robert and I looked at, at the Barney Road today. And it wasn't on this list, and, and represented it. We, we made sure that McChicken was the first one that was on it because it's in the Hazerhurst district, and that we wanted to make sure that it was represented. But I would like to ride with you and see if you can talk to people in the area. Because if we don't have room to put a ditch, we can't stop that. When that water stays on that road, it softens that asphalt. If anybody's logging or anything, and that is gonna break it loose.
Okay, so they're, you saying they need to give up some property?
Well, yes, we gonna have to be able to get rid of those. I tried on the Amanda Thomas Road and.
Cause on the creek, yeah, that's on that creek, right, that's around that curb.
And when, when.
I bet women's road is bad.
Yes, when, when, when you think me and you can get together, and I'd like to ride.
The problem is, if you ain't got a bayon, the damn use for asphalt. If they weren't willing to give a right away to put a bayon there, that asphalt, that asphalt's no better than the found access.
Right, right. It might be a, it might be a concrete thing across that slot, around the creek.
Well, we, we, we made, and we, we have put concrete in three or four places, not, not all the way across the road and along the way. But we made, but I'd love to ride with you, just to talk, and, and then see what that you, that we might can do. Because, you know, we gotta have some, some way to get water off the road.
Right, I understand, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, both commissioners, I'm Al Horrins, I'm here from Bacon County.
Yes, sir.
And I'm here speaking on behalf of agriculture, and my cousins here, they have boards, Carlos's hands boards and raising money. They have a few blueberries out there, and it used to be very productive. But for some hard other, the drainage in that area is terrible. And I was wondering if you would please have someone to check it out and suggest any kind of work that would be possible for the county to assist them with. It's all for right now. It's almost had to be abandoned due to the drainage.
Yes, sir. I rode it with Robert, our superintendent, and seeing where they had dug some ditches and some search pipes, or drainage pipes have been dug up. I mean, they some pine trees that's probably twenty foot tall, like you said, that nobody has used. I noticed that y'all have rotor mower down between it, and all used to when y'all came. Just saying that I'm on John Hewlett, what's that name?
Hewlett.
Okay, Hewlett Wood Road. And when you on that road, and you turn to the left to go down between the two blueberry patches. I got a call that, you know, y'all were interested in trying to bring it back, and Carla and I have rode it. And I've rode it with our superintendent, Road Department. And we took in the first part there that. And we took in, uh, the first part there that, where you turn off the road. Was there ever any ditches dug?
Well, that's two or three ditches around there, and it's a huge ditch kind of north, center, south side.
Yes, sir.
But it's not putting the water off.
And then there's one cross pipe between, uh, where it comes across the Hewlett-Wooten Road. Goes down, there's a little, little ditch where you come out of one blueberry field and go into another. And then it goes to y'all's pond.
Yes, sir.
Uh, back there at the end. And there's a cross pipe there, but nowhere else that I rode all the way down, either way, that there was another cross pipe. They were driveway pipes. And for the water that sheds, uh, after you pass Mr. Richards' house on down toward Thompson Timber. Where does that water come to and get off the road at?
Well, Mr. Carlos here, he can take more than I can, but I'm just interested in the agriculture and the blueberry industry. And I would appreciate if you guys could consider giving my hand.
Thank you.
Good, Mr. Chairman, uh, Carlos Hand Junior. And, uh, uh, I'm here representing the family and the farm. Uh, if I may answer some of your questions. Several years ago, uh, that, that land, we bought that land in nineteen forty-seven. And, uh, there was never really any terrible, uh, flooding problems down through there. And, uh, cause we walked, we walked down to the end of the road in order to meet the bus and we finished high school here. And, and I've been going seventy years, but I've been, also been part of it. Dad, uh, when the plant down in Jessup and Brunswick, when they needed water down there. And we needed to get rid of some water. Uh, between Jeff Davis County and Army Corps of Engineers, uh, we had a, a ditch put in. That ends on our property. And we gave an easement to the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, the people responsible for the act. And, uh, as I understand it, each, each county between here and there, uh, is responsible for their own ditch. Uh, I did not bring them with me because basically I'm trying to find out what's going on. Uh, we have been there since forty-seven. And, uh, we've never been in a position where we can't work our land. And right now, our, uh, blueberries, and you mentioned, uh, uh, rotoring them and the middles and all, which we did. And we were getting to the point that we couldn't put, uh, a gatherer, a harvester in there. Because it's been so wet the last two years and this year. Finally dried out the way we could, but we couldn't put it in there because of the pines that have grown up in those two wet years. So, in what was a very profitable situation is in three years, we have sold a hundred and eleven dollars worth of blueberries. Now, some of those ditches are not open, I have walked them. And, uh, that, uh, when we put the ditches with the Army Corps of Engineers. There was supposed to be ditches to come around that contributed to that contributory that was going, uh, to the coast. Uh, and some of those I have walked them myself recently, and some of them are not open. My dad cut that ditch, what, you, you said there was one, uh.
Cross pipe.
Uh, cross pipe going through there. And there's another one up, uh, right at the landline that, uh, was replaced. Now, who replaced it, I don't know. But, uh, anyhow, it turned that water loose on us when that other ditch was stocked up. Uh, I'm not making accusations or anything like that, I'm just saying it's illegal. And, uh, uh, I'm here to really find out what's going on. We couldn't, uh, we couldn't finish cleaning the blueberries in time to harvest them. Uh, we were going to get pickers to go in there because a harvester cannot go in there. Those ditches eliminated, and we have our own harvester. Uh, but those ditches eliminated what we do.
When was the last time these blueberries were harvested?
Uh, they were harvested until we got the last rains, uh, three years ago, three years ago. Last year was not. Uh, it was too wet. But all of that water, if you go down that road and you ride, uh, through it out to the Alma Highway. You'll see ditches back there that is so stagnant, it's nothing but green slime. And, uh, that water is going nowhere. But.
How beautiful.
Hewlett-Wooten Road.
There's several trying to ditch us off that road.
Uh, but that harvester, you know, if, if, if you've seen a, a, a blueberry harvester in, in motion. Uh, it is quite tall. And, uh, and a ditch like that, uh, you're flipping over, you're not going anywhere. And, uh, we're trying to find out what's going on. We want to move on from here, but, uh, the ditches were there just unannounced. We couldn't, we could not finish, uh, even cleaning up our blueberries. And, and you know, uh, I just, some comments, you know, like, uh, well, some of the agreements from the past is long gone.
Have you been talking to someone about this? I mean, this is for a family, uh, what I'm asking.
Uh, I have just.
And I called the chairman, and the chairman and I were out there to see what, where he was talking about. That was about two weeks ago.
And, and the culverts, the culverts that supposed to take the water, I should have brought, uh, uh. A diagram showing, but the culverts that are supposed to take the water. And get it to the ditch well over here that the Army Corps of Engineers brought in. Uh, they, uh, it can't get back there. Uh, because the other ditches have been short bit, but yes, I have been talking to some people. I have talked to Carla, I like your taste in lawyer, but, uh, uh, we're, but anyhow, uh. We need to find out what's going on. Uh, how, how do we fit in with what's going on? And, uh, uh, that, that, uh, I came in and, and kind of took it over. Uh, some caregivers that had my brother regimen, uh, did not handle things too well. And, and the finances got terrible, Julia's aware of this, and, uh, uh, Julia was with Carla. Uh, I'm sorry, I have a daughter named Carla and a granddaughter named Judith, but, uh, uh. It's just, uh, so I stepped in and, and we have been trying to get things back on track. And, uh, that's what I'm here for, is to find out where do we fit in? And I hope we're all not on the wrong side fence, so.
Can I, can I ask something? Is this the, the, the warship, probably the kind of the early nineteen seventies?
Yes.
With the ditch, yeah, I remember it very well because I was new in Jeff Evans County. And it kind of struck me as unusual that the core engineer, engineers would come in and, and drain areas. And that was caused the low flat areas in South Georgia, and I was from Middle Georgia, you know, I wasn't from here. And I don't remember, I remember I, I covered the story and did a lot of articles back in the seventies, but I don't remember. I kind of agree that I thought the county, I'll look back on my article, but I think the county was responsible for keeping it. I, I don't know that.
Well, that's what I was told from some of the other counties.
I, I just don't know for sure, but I remember it very well.
Can I say something though? N R C S.
That's it.
That's who you got to say.
Alright, that.
Oh, and there it is. You're right, you're exactly right. And it goes through Olin's property, it goes right on through there. It actually starts up there at Hazerhurst Mill.
Right.
That's the beginning of it.
Exactly.
Yes, I remember.
Okay, and it's got to be cleaned out. And there is supposed to be something to keep it clean. I don't know how the money's come out, but there is something with the Army Corps of Engineers with that. And you, N R C S is who you need to say. Cause I, I heard this come up last, last year or a couple of years ago. But N R C S is who you need to really talk to. And, and that, there is something to keep it clean, that ditch. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Well, that, yes, and that big ditch over there is, is not, has not, is not affecting our livelihood.
First of all, while Ray was the chairman, uh, we took and different people comes and tells us about these ditches. And when core engineer did it, and Janice Aldrich over in the Soil and Water Conservation Office that he's talking about over there, where the agriculture office is, uh, F S A. We went and backed the paperwork that when core engineer did it, and it's on record. And part of it, did you dig it up?
It is on record, isn't it?
Yeah, clerk's office. And it told us, the ones on the Almer, I mean, the backs of the highway, just by Rodney Nemb's place and Lonnie Waters' place. I think it comes across there and winds in, one even goes up behind, uh, Hill Press Church and comes down. Uh, that little dirt road behind it, and it crossed over into Beasley's. And Beasley's across the road and went down through Olin's all the way to Glenn A. Cox Fund. Glenn A. Cox Fund into Lake Mary, out of Lake Mary on down where they were trucked all the way. And, but now, we had that on record that the county was supposed to. We went down and put, I think, two pipes, two big pipes. And I, I mean, I, I don't want to sit here and say something and somebody put it on the paper or something, but I'm not, or the video. But about ninety-nine percent sure, but I'm not swearing to it, but we put two pipes. And we went in about a mile and a half on that road.
Right, and Luther Turner Road.
Yes, sir. And then we got down to where it crossed Luther Turner's Road and went into Olin Wooten Spence there. We went in them gates and walked the excavator to where it had stopped all the way up. And we put two big pipes, I believe they was sixty inch or maybe seventy-two inch. I mean, whatever it was, two big pipes.
Right.
So we had to order them in, we didn't stop them. And, but now, we had it, it was up in the clerk's office and it told which ditch the county had to keep up. And it was that. Yeah, we have been, we've been struck by two different people, you be the third person since I've been on the board. That's come to us and says, this is a core engineer ditch. And it's supposed to be kept up, and we can't find the paperwork saying where the county is supposed to keep it up. And it was not done at the same time it reported with this one that I'm talking about here.
Well, in all fairness, Mr. Chairman, I may say, if you don't misspeak, I don't think you're in the fair, Mr. Hand. I have not researched, this has just come up. To see if his is.
Yeah, I, I don't know that yours is not.
I'm just going by the old, we're going by the old that we did find. So, I don't know if yours is or not, I'm not saying it is and I'm not saying it's not.
Yeah.
Cause I haven't ran any, any power search to the place at all.
But really, really, my big concern is not, uh, the ditch coming up itself. Uh, getting, getting the water from, alright, like, there's one pipe crossing that road. Well, the road machine has taken the top off of that and it's laying it out in the woods. Uh, and then the one that's on the corner down there where all the water comes together. And then, uh, he had his purposes, I'm sure, but, uh, Olin cut through the cow pasture and, and moved that water coming straight into there. Well, that ditch that goes around somehow is not functioning.
We, we don't have permits that people has to come and get a permit from us to be able to dig or throw water on somebody else. But it's illegal to throw water on somebody else. And, and so, what I would do if I was you first, Mr. Hand, I would go to the Soil and Water Conservation Office. She was the one that put us informed that we were responsible and it was done and when it was done. Ms. Carla went back and dug all the paperwork up.
Yes, sir, I understand what you're talking about there, yes.
And, uh, but I would start there and, uh, and then once the core engineer, uh, different ones gets involved. And if somebody is throwing water on you, then, you know, they dug somewhere they shouldn't have, just with wetlands or something. That'd be outside of what we, if you understand.
Okay, my basic question that I started with was how do we fit in with what you're doing? I mean, we, we had no idea that the ditches were going to be dug. If, uh, if the crock is gone, it's not, it's, uh, blue, uh, light birds had a good time.
Yes, and, well, I mean, I understand that, uh, when we went out there, Carla and I rode it and then when, uh, I, I went before, after then. With the Road Superintendent. And, you know, and I looked, and I mean, I knew that, uh, you couldn't put no machines in there, cause they some twelve, fifteen foot pine trees.
Right, you're right. You could not put it in there, that's, that's.
So, uh, we had no idea that y'all were fixing to go back and harvest them. If hadn't, then I don't know that we did do the ditches there. If the ditch has always been there, and that's what I was asking you earlier. When you come out of the field, was those ditches used to be there, fifth thing, you said y'all been there since forty-seven?
Yes, sir.
And was they ditches on each side of the road when y'all was living there?
Very minimal.
Okay, not very deep.
No.
And you would cross it with a tractor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and when Dad planted those blueberries back in somewhere between seventy-five and eighty. Uh, we, he got together and, uh, those roads were lined in a certain ways according to how they said the water would drain better. We did that, he did that. And, uh, uh, now with the roads with the ditches like they are. But main thing, uh, Mr. Chairman, is, is the culverts that are in there, uh, they don't have tops on them.
Yeah, we, 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 we rode this Friday, it was a week ago. And then every motor grader we had was on the opposite side of town. And we got about seven inches of rain, got three inches or something in one evening. And they moved that, yeah, we proud of it, they moved them, all four motor graders to the Alamo Hall. Or on the other side of the road that they've been running all week. And, uh, but I did see that, uh, our attorney saw that, and Robert knows that. We did not know it till Friday was a week ago when I rode, or this first time I'd heard about it.
About the culverts?
About the culverts, the top being tore off?
Sir, that's been going on for six months.
Uh, who have you been talking to?
Uh, I have been by the county, the, by the road office over there personally. And, uh, I have talked to a couple of people in here. Uh, but, uh, yes, it's been, it's been like this for a while. In fact, the, the culverts of the drive to people's houses out that way, uh, on Hewlett Road. They don't drain, there's nothing under there. I'm just pointing all this out that say we got a problem. And, uh, and my, my staple was, how do we fit in? You know, if we're just going to dig the ditches where we can't get in there and harvest, uh. Then what's been going on for years is, is down the drain.
And Mr. Brad is asking, I think, that, I think the question, well, my question is, I'm just, right. How long ago has it been? Five years since y'all done a commercial and gathered them?
No, 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 it's, uh, this is the third year.
It's been three years since you have gathered them to sell, you know?
Yes, and we had planned on them this year. And, uh, we got in, uh, uh, financial stress output because, uh, the caregivers involved, that's a whole nother ballgame. That had nothing to do here, but, uh, uh, we fixed equipment and we worked on equipment. And we've spent several thousand dollars trying to get it going again. And, uh, so how do we fit in?
Well, first of all, uh, I don't think anybody on this board.
That's the first time I've heard about it, I tell you.
I heard about it Friday was a week ago.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and I rode out, Ms. Carla, when you went over to her office and talked to her. She called me and I told her I didn't know anything about it, but I knew where it was at. And, uh, and we went out and looked at it. And now what's been told at the Road Department or whatever, how long? And now what's been told at the road department or whatever, how long ago has that been?
Since I personally went in.
Yes.
Maybe a year. During the winter, there was not much we could do. And it was still accessible, it was accessible until...
Do you know who you talked with then? I mean, probably superintendent, but they're gone, but just you know who you talked with?
No, sir.
What about that?
Is your main problem, you can't get into your fields, to your blueberries, to ditches is dug, to the side of the road?
And if you get in, you can't turn around once you get in there. And the only way that they can be harvested anymore is by hand.
Or did it used to just come across the road into the next field and line? They never been deep ditches, they dig them a foot deep. Get the water drained in the past few weeks they were there and done.
But, Mr. Chairman, whatever y'all can do is appreciated by us. And we didn't come here to pick a fight or anything like that, we just, we have a problem and I'd like to get it solved.
Well, I won't forget about it just cause you turned around and walked back. I'll see what that we could do on that end or what that we may have done wrong and what that we did. I know that we need to fix two pipe.
One, two, three, there are three pipes on that little piece of road. There was a large pipe in there and somebody removed the big pipe and put two small pipes under there. I don't know who did that.
Well, the best thing I do is come out, meets you, ride with you, bring the super.
Well, I, I live in... I live in Dublin, but I'm down here all the time, so.
What's your phone number, I'd reach you?
My cell is four seven eight nine eight three seven eight zero one. And my brother Reginald's at the house out there all the time. But yes, feel free to call me.
I would, I promise you. Might not what I got to say, but we'll talk it out and see what we do. But if I was you, I would go to the Soil and Water Conservation Office and talk to Ms. Janice Aldridge. And she may, it may be where that we can find out the records and if that's ditches, it turned over to the county and said, well, we supposed to keep them up or whatever.
Janice Aldridge.
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 Oh, okay, thank you. Any other questions you may have? I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You were kind of looking all into talking to the issue.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do, I got three things. Oh, back, back to the...
Don't know.
Huh?
I said, no, maybe you don't know.
Okay, back to the roads. Y'all mentioned Claxton Road. I know they're about twenty fourteen, that road was patched, repaired.
Paid.
From one end to the other?
Carter McWood, if you wanted me to tell it off.
Okay, well, why not, do we not get any kind of warranty or guarantee on that kind of stuff?
Oh, we tried to do them and I'm, you're welcome, they bonded. They may come over here and they be five different trucks, Ripson, I don't, I don't.
So, no, we can't, we can't go back on them?
We can't, we can't go back on them.
Okay, good enough.
We tried that before that.
All right, Yawn Road. Um, when y'all do get hostile around here, um, the road, y'all have patched a bunch of holes out there, but that road has got some ruts in it, it's holding water.
Right, where you got it?
Two recent wrecks, I'm talking about very recent, probably the other evening during that rain, there was, where Tony and Tanya Brown live, the old Hewlett House, they wrecked in that ditch. I know we got a water issue shedding off the road and it's holding in the, in the ruts. The third thing, and it's gonna be a sore subject, and y'all probably don't want to discuss this on camera, I can turn the camera off if we need to. The commissioner that's supposed to be representing the Hazenhurst District, he's not been here and I know the past three, his presence has not been here like it should be to represent the people that elected him. Is there anything we can do? There's been an election been held, a new commissioner has been elected. Can anything be done to maybe get Mr. James already? I mean, he's interested, he's been to a few meetings.
We, we can't really talk about it. We have checked in on some things. And when you elected for a term for so-and-so and so-and-so, that if you die, then you can, they can replace you. If you resign, we had a commissioner one time that did and they had a special election. But if you hold the seat and doesn't, don't come to the meeting, you was elected by the people for a four-year term and they say with you.
Have y'all heard from him?
I haven't, and I can't tell me, you know, but I have.
If he was, and I'm, y'all may not answer this, but I'm going. If he, if he was to resign, is it close enough to the new year that...
ACCG regulates our law what we can and cannot do. And where you going if he did, can somebody step on him? We couldn't tell you that. Mr. Benjamin was elected as of January first, two thousand and eighteen. And not at this one, so we, we couldn't say, yeah, seventeen.
Don't be rushing it up.
Yeah, don't rush it.
That's it.
All right, anybody else? Thank y'all.